If you wouldn't take our please seats, please. Welcome to this afternoon's work session. First order of business is if any commissioner would like to discuss any of the preliminary items for next meeting.
Um, yes, not really an exact preliminary item. I didn't want to hold up, well, I'll wait to be acknowledged first, I apologize. My brain works fast.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes. I just really would like staff to go over these, um, lot of these routine, items that are not routine, I meant to say. And the other thing is, um, when we got the, the actual final agenda the last time, there was quite a bit on there that was not on the pre-agenda for us to even discuss. So I just really wish staff would, um, prepare, possibly, which they've done a great job now, but prepare to give us this information in the work sessions, uh, so that we're more prepared when it comes to the board meetings itself, and not have those things added at that time a little bit later. The final note, I want to make sure staff hears very clearly, is that all elected officials have the ability to put something under an agenda. And particularly, those that are not a department leader, if we don't know about it, it doesn't come to this board, then we haven't had a chance to vet it. So those are the main two things I just want, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, you can convey to staff so that we can do our due diligence, um, as policymakers.
Just to be clear, anything that's added, you want that department head to come before the board to discuss anything that's not on the agenda?
Correct, yes, because we're given information the Friday before if it had not been reviewed on a pre-agenda, um, and then we're sitting in the meeting, like the last board meeting, there were about four items on there that has never been brought before this board, during the work session, and it's not routine items, let me say that, it's not routine items.
Okay.
And then finally, just for whoever makes the agenda, to understand that we are not in compliance, if we tell any elected official that they've got to wait to bring something to a board member during a meeting, if an elected official wants something on a meeting, it goes on a meeting. I would hope they choose the first meeting, so the second one is not extended so long of the third meeting, um, that's extended so long, but, um, that should not be stopped by staff, because then we find out later about things not done, but it hasn't been brought for the board to be vetted.
Anything else?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number 11, to begin to get some clarification.
When you say?
Additional personnel, Clayton County Sheriff's Office.
All right, somebody from the Sheriff's Department here. I can speak to it. Ms. CEO.
Chairman and Vice Chair and Board of Commissioners, so I want to be clear on Commissioner Davis's question. Um, when you say pull it, you're looking to get more?
I want to pull it to get some further information on it.
Okay.
Just information such as, you know, I know they asked for some last year, how many are they short, all those types, that type of information.
Okay.
So we can begin to make a, a good, informed decision.
Gotcha.
Uh, speaking on that, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on a second, let him respond to Commissioner Davis first.
All right, so I'm trying to get the, the specific question that's being asked, so that we can?
Okay, they're asking for 50, okay, they're, how much are they asking for, um, you know, what levels are they coming in at, what happened, how many were, um, were hired last year, what was their request from last year, how many are still on, on staff, how many have resigned or gone on to other places, how many have been added to?
Got it. So, what's happened up to this point in time, we met with the sheriff and his staff to talk specifically about his request, there's two, the, the request actually is formulated in two areas. The request should reflect 25 personnel, he's asking for 25 personnel, deputies to be specific, um, based upon him reaching, reaching all his bullets at this point in time. So he's asking for 25 to be filled at this particular time, and then, uh, through his budget request, he's meeting with the chairman and, um, the C-level staff on tomorrow, actually, to talk through the details of his, probably, the other part of his budget request for FY24, tax or the balance of the 25 at that time. Um, the sheriff's position simply has been that, um, he's had a huge request within his, um, within his department, to ensure that, um, he can fill all his bullets, he feels that he can continue to take on some additional responsibilities in said space, so that's why he's asking for it to be done in twofold, include the 25 and the 25.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that finance and HR are working through, that would be part of the budget requests on next week, they can spell out all those details to include the financial impact on what this initial request will call for, and then ultimately, if in fact, um, you know, we move forward with the other 25 requests, during his budget request, and the board will see that through the budgetary process.
So I mean, as I just said, requesting 50 additional deputies.
I understand, I understand, and so the deal there is that HR will file out, provide a whole presentation on next Wednesday to outline all those particulars that the sheriff is asking for.
After we vote on this Tuesday?
No, that will be presented at the present, that will be pointed at, board meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, I thought you said Wednesday, okay.
Wednesday is their budget presentate, their, their budget hearing is on tomorrow, on Thursday, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then ultimately, um, we'll look at the details from there.
I have a concern about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Franklin.
And I brought it up before, thank you. It is very important, and I want to remind us of even what happened previously with, um, there were needs, particularly dealing with the GBI not providing services before. And, um, all of us go to these classes. Now, anyone that's elected can meet with Mr. Chairman, that is fine, but we have a constitutional responsibility that unfortunately, even when it came to the building, that we all didn't quite understand. Also, even when it came to the delineation between risk classes, this entire board did not previously understand. Whatever it is that's asked, needs to be asked in a public forum and before this board. Again, we can't control other people, but I want to make sure that this board understands that we have a constitutional responsibility to know what is missing in any area, and I got to give one judge credit, and that is, um, the judge of probate court, she understands it more than anybody else. And we talked about this last year when we found out that the locks were out, that were things going on with the building, when I went over there and saw, we had, the county had these contracts and things not functioning properly, and I think that it's imperative that this board understands, that that's not, that any of those constitutional offices are not a department, and not to be treated as such, because then we put ourselves in a possible state that we could be going against, things that we're required to do based upon the Constitution. It should not be line item out by anyone, not even the CEO or the COO, the board votes up or down on those decisions.
Good point, Commissioner, so, uh, so that, so that I'm clear, um, in communicating the process and space, um, we were not withholding or asking the sheriff not to bring forth information. Uh, one of the things that this board is holding us accountable for is ensuring that we're providing you accurate information.
Correct.
And so the deal there was in ensuring that based upon the sheriff's request, everybody had an understanding of what their request was detailing. Um, once he got the information over to HR, um, Ms. Ambles and her team wanted to ensure that the particulars that the sheriff was asking for was reflective of all that he needed, to include what his, his present bullets were, and ultimately, if ultimately they had been filled, then what the financial impact would be based upon that request.
That is important.
And so the deal there was, um, initially was supposed to come before the board, the, um, the first board meeting in May, um, based upon the fact that we needed more time to re, to review that information, is why we said that, were you good with that coming to you the second board meeting in May? Sheriff said he was fine with that, um, Ms. Ambles is certainly getting all that information, ensure that's reflective of what the sheriff's ask is, so therefore, we can ensure that we're providing the board this accurate information regarding the finances, regarding all the positions that he's looking to bring forward.
Wonderful, and, um, CFO is in here, but the dev, Ms. Jackson, you will be prepared to share the financial information with the entire board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hammer.
Um, not confused, but this is what I always say at this time of the year, this is budget time. So, um, this should be a part, I, well, this should be a part of the budget, and it should be into the budget discussion. So I was a bit taken back when I saw this, and I'm thinking, we're right at budget, this is what, May, and budget is due June?
That's the process.
Before July 1, so this should be a part of the budget. I don't see why we are taking this out as an individual discussion, I think it should be discussed in the budget, chairman sends that to us, and we look at it and, and, you know, talk about it then, so.
And let me just add, it is his request that it come before this board, not, uh, not staff or finance or anybody else, the sheriff is requesting that we reviewed as ahead of the budget, but at the end of the day, it's our decision to vote, to either vote on it then, or just to hold it for, for the budget.
And, and in all due respect. We keep going off, off, um, course, we did it last year, and we did it the year before, I would like for us to stay with the budget, I mean, not saying this won't pass, it, it, you know, but let it stay in the budget, because what's to say if every department head comes and wants to do the same thing, then we are doing a double budget, I guess, I mean, I don't know what to call it.
Commissioner, if I may?
Commissioner Franklin.
Commissioner, with all due respect, I agree with you, but this board chooses when we bring things before us. No offense, but we just voted for a raise for the top, it seems like this board has no problem bringing raises for the top, and it doesn't matter whether it's within the budget cycle, and that is unfair, we got to be consistent. And I, and just like the reason I even called for the question earlier, I find unfortunately, that there are times to where there's one narrative that applies at one particular time, but not at the other time, and in all fairness, that, for, for a fair debate, this sheriff just got in the position, and if he's asking and needing something, I'd ask this board to go back and review our constitutional responsibilities. It doesn't matter how people try to turn it or twist it, but I have said over and over again, as a board, when we're inconsistent with the way that we treat those who are serving our community, it just is not reflected good on us. And we sat here and we promoted people, we gave people raises, but like you talked about earlier, Commissioner Anderson, a lot of these people that are employees live in this county, and are struggling to make it, and they deserve to be protected, and if that sheriff who was just got in and sees that he needs it, then we can't stop an elected official from coming, bringing it before the board? No offense, we hired Ms. Jackson, we hired several other people, and there was no question, it was just how much they need, and it's done. We gave Matthew a raise, I could go on and on and on. So if we are going to say we're going to stick to the budget cycle, then we got to be consistent with that, and we can't do it at the risk of putting our community at risk, because it's coming from an elected official who this board, or the person that may or may not be over operations, cannot control. That is right, and that's difference between right and wrong, but it's the majority vote that does go forward. And regardless, I want to remind you all again, it's for the CFO and for those folks to bring the information before us, we got computers, and if something's needed and we need to vet it, it needs to come before us. It needs to come before us. To have one commissioner where they really asking for 50, no, bring the full ask, bring the details, whether it's PD, I fought for PD, but at the same token, the citizens suffer because we choose when to apply certain narratives, and that just is not right to these people.
Again, Commissioner, everything that's being said is certainly, um, taken on advisement from the staff perspective, again, the deal there is, is that if something is not coming before the board, it's the fact that we're ensuring that, we're vetting the information, so therefore, we're providing this board and the citizens accurate information. If there's been a situation where we haven't bought something before the board, it has not been due to staff inserting themselves in a way to preclude that information from coming to the board, or not representing the needs of that respective department, or constitutional officer, whoever that might be, it's ensuring that we bring forth the information. So, in this particular instance, as it pertains to the sheriff's request, we ask that it be tabled to the second board meeting in May, because we want to ensure that we understood his request appropriately, to make sure that we're, again, because to your point, the staff has to represent that information, and to the sheriff's credit, he said that, he said, listen, I'm still trying to figure out the, all the particulars in my department, I don't know. And part of our conversation was about the, the nuances, as well as our processes that we use in, in order to bring forth information to this, to this board. So, again, um, we will be ready to provide all the details that the sheriff, um, would like to see part of the, the request at next week's board meeting. More importantly, he'll be here, or represented from his department to, again, expound upon or provide clarity to areas that ultimately, we can't speak to as it pertains to the operational tenant of this department.
Thank you, I hope we can figure it out, because on my timeline, it's nothing but crime after crime after crime, and everybody always says, and I'm gonna say it, the crime didn't go up until a certain person was gone, so hopefully, y'all can figure this out.
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson.
I just want to say also, we did talk about, and I know this was early, a little bit early, but we did talk about just staff bringing things for the work session, so we, we can make sure that we have them for the meeting, so I just want to make sure that staff understands that if there's something that we can get in the work session, you know, I want, I want to make sure we're discussing it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess that, you know, y'all know I come from the school board, so, you know, we had everything in that work session, and then after that, we discussed it, but I think that's routinely throughout the, you know, through, even with counties as well, so we need to see it first, you know, as well. And again, we can't pick and choose who we give raises to, we can't pick and choose that, yes, I did come on this board, and I did come on this board wanting to make sure that our, our PD and our SO officers and everyone had raises, because they had not had raises in 12 years, 10 years. So, again, the quality, we got to keep the quality of life of all of our citizens up, and we're going to have to make some hard decisions sometimes, and yeah, it, there, things are going to come to us, but we got to make sure that we take care of the people first, and taking care of the people is making sure that our employees are taken care of as well as the people. So, you know, I'm gonna get off my soapbox, but again, we can't pick and choose, you know, and so, you know, things are going to come up, and we just have to, we have to go through it as a board, thank you.
Chairman. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, um, back to number 11, where we're talking about the additional 50, this is about being fiscally responsible, I just want supporting documentation, supporting information, to justify why this is going to happen. Um, I've heard what we, the board, don't understand, and, you know, I don't know what the other members of the board understand, but I know what I understand. So when folks begin to speak of, uh, understanding from a collective nature, um, I, I would hope they would refrain from that, but as far as this, I just want supporting documentation to justify what he is asking for, so that we can be fiscally and fiscally responsible in giving a constitutional officer what they require.
May I, Chairman?
Commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, CEO.
What we're talking specifically is about, about our processes. What, what's happening is that, in this particular instance, these are preliminary agenda items, so is it expectation of the board, in all instances, that if we put a preliminary agenda item on the agenda, that we should be in a position to provide all the support documentations for that preliminary agenda item? And here's why I ask that question. So we met with the sheriff's office last week, and, um, Director Ambles and her team are working feverishly along with, um, finance to ensure that the details of the request is reflective of what the sheriff is looking for.
And you said that already, so we understand.
Right, so, so, but in this particular instance, the board is asking for there to be the work session to have that support documentation in place, to speak intelligently about what that request would detail, be detailed out. Well, we're providing you information today in the work session, but we don't have all those particulars, certainly, we'll have that information by the board meeting next Tuesday, but today, Commissioner, to Commissioner Davis's point, he's asking very specific questions about the work session item that we don't have. So I'm asking from a staffing standpoint, is it expectation, and when we put the preliminary agenda items on, that we have all the support documentation at the work session, if there is one, prior to the agenda, so staff would know to be prepared here at work session to provide you that information for those preliminary items?
May I?
Is that the goal and wishes of this board?
Since I raised?
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I want to clarify that. It would be nice to have the items, but specifically what I was speaking of, since you're going back to that, was the fact there were items added to the agenda, that were not on it during the preliminary process, and not reviewed during it as well. There was maybe a title, and that was it, and then when we finally get the information, it, it, it doesn't, like, the first time around, it may not raise any questions, but by the time we get your information, it looks brand new, because we're just getting it and it's added to the agenda. But I want to be sure on this, though, because of the Constitution, and there's a reason I said that, is because when I'm looking at the fact that fees that should have been used for a jail, that we're responsible for the building, just like I'm going through this review with Rainbow House, as a board, we're responsible for that building, then we need to understand as board members, specifically when we ask questions about, well, why is it needed? That tells me that the board does not necessarily have a true understanding of our constitutional responsibilities, whether it's there, or even the old courthouse, i.e., that does not even have an accessible elevator for people to be able to get a gurney on. So there are things that we're responsible for, so that's what I'm speaking of, when I spoke of that, and then specifically in regards to what goes on the agenda, whatever's on this agenda, by Friday, need to be prepared to go over, and then by Tuesday, if it has not been gone over, by staff, departmental staff, then that information needs to be brought to this board.
Yes, ma'am. So for, for the clarity and edification for everyone, information that's added on the agenda after Friday would be deemed as an emergency request. So, in some instances, we don't have that information on Friday, or at the board meeting on Tuesday.
Add it.
Because it became an emergency request from a mu, a multitude of reasons. It can be some, something that's constitutionally or statutorily we have to do, or this board may come forth and add an item post the Friday, and then we try to vet that through the process of saying it's an emergency request opposed to it being part of the quote-unquote "agenda item" processes in place. So you're 100% correct, Commissioner, that if you receive information that is reflected on the agenda after the Friday, more importantly, even after Thursday, then ultimately, that would be deemed an emergency item, meaning that more than likely, we got the information either post the adoption of the code, or there was something that, this board felt that was important, that needed to be elevated, that needed to be put on that agenda on that Tuesday. So, I don't recall or don't remember the items in question for Tuesday that was added post the agenda adoption, but, um, your point is well taken.
No problem.
But we want to make sure that the, the collective understand that if there was something that was added post that time, then it should fall under the guise of an emergency request.
No problem. Uh, my final request is that, um, we bring before us, uh, someone from the state, you know, maybe perhaps, Commissioner Davis, now that he's on the board actually, can work with us, so that we all get a refresher of what our responsibilities and duties are, because it's clear that we have to make sure that we take care of those protecting us first, and that is fire, PD, and all of them. If we don't do that first and foremost, the rest of that budget outside of the employees and, um, and, and what they're doing, um, in, in the courthouse and other areas, we're not doing our job as a board. That's first and foremost.
Any other comments, questions, in reference to this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Stanford. This time, we're going to go into our work discussion items, uh, Ms. Secure Rice from school system would talk about CCPS volunteer program.
Thank you, thank you. Chairman Turner, Vice Chair Franklin, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Cambrig, and Mr. Davis, thank you so very much for giving me this opportunity this evening. I would like to bring forward to you, um, just for some consideration, Ms. Ambles and I, we have been meeting, um, throughout this year, to discuss something that was very near and dear, um, to Commissioner Gregory's heart. Uh, we have been in discussions about coming up with a way for our Clayton County governmental employees to join forces with Clayton County Public School employees to volunteer within our schools. So tonight, I just want to talk about a possible way that we can, um, agree, um, to go, to form a partnership, so that Clayton County governmental employees will have an opportunity to volunteer at one of our 66 school sites. Now, as you see, the Center for UCLA and Harvest, the Harvard Business Review, they both quote, um, this powerful quote, um, from two separate, um, sources. I, I cited these two quotes from these institutions, because the center at UCLA and the Harvard, of course Harvard, Harvard are two very, um, strong research institutions, and so they both speak to the significance of volunteering within a community, and how volunteering within that community and schools can improve test scores, improve your attendance, and matriculation, and lower the misbehavior. None of us have to question what's going on in schools nowadays, we see it when we open our social media accounts, when we look at anything on our news media, news feed. We have some concerns, and so as the school board, we are charged with ways to try to mitigate those concerns. In addition, research tells us that businesses look at how well the schools are doing when they look to relocate to certain communities. Our superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith, has a very robust plan and vision for our Clayton County school system. Uh, with the passage of our last plots, we are now looking at almost a billion dollars worth of infrastructure improvements to all of our schools. We are already receiving phone calls, uh, from people wanting to do business with our school system, wanting to move to the area because of, um, plans such as an indoor, uh, track field, um, our golf site at some of our schools. The closest indoor track, um, field is now Birmingham, Alabama, so we will now start to attract many, many organizations to our areas. So now is the time to start to really look at improving our schools, and so this is a way that we can work together collectively to do that, in a very simplistic way. So the fundamental premise is Clayton County government employees will be afforded the opportunity to volunteer. We have 66 school sites, in addition to some ancillary sites. And what we're asking is that some type of volunteer leave, um, policy can be erected that will afford each Clayton County governmental employee eight hours, eight hours for the year, so that they, if they choose to volunteer at their child's school, their relative's school, or just any school of choice, they would not have to expend their own personal leave to do so. So again, we're just simply asking for eight hours of volunteer leave that would be considered for governmental employees. Now, what would they be doing, you may ask? These are some possible duties and responsibilities. Reading to small groups in elementary schools, as you know, um, on the elementary level, reading to scholars is a excellent way to increase their reading fluency, um, so, some of our teachers right now, we're, we're about 425 teachers short throughout our district. Sometimes the teachers may not have time to get to that floor time to do some reading to their small groups. All it takes is someone coming in and simply reading, taking an hour or so out of, out of their time to just read to our scholars, so that may be an opportunity. Cafeteria duty, secondary, I'm a former middle school principal, I'm a former high school assistant principal, I'm a former high school teacher, the cafeteria is a hotspot in secondary, so simply having an extra set of eyes and ears in the cafeteria, um, could cut down on a lot. Mentoring, um, last evening, I had the pleasure of serving with, um, a panel that 110 Live News and V103 held downtown, and I had the honor of being on their panel to speak about the importance of mentoring our scholars. I always call it a high five, every scholar needs five adults besides their parents, instrumental in their lives, then we will see a decrease in behavior, an increase in academics, with five people, just caring about them, talking to them on a daily basis. Assisting with field day, field days are major on the elementary level, our parents love field days. Chaperoning field trips, exposure is key, exposure is key. Sometimes when we take our scholars on field trips, that is the first time many of our, uh, many of our scholars have gone outside of Clayton County. So, the exposure is very important to their development, and co-curricular to the curriculum. Participating in career days, many of our governmental employees, they already participate with us now, but these are just, this is just, um, a list of duties and responsibilities that, um, the governmental employees can do if granted that eight-hour leave. And some operational items, of course, we will have to discuss, um, Ms. Ambles and I, we have discussed some of these as well this year, a check-in, check-out system, so that if they are afforded these eight hours, you would know exactly where they are and what they are doing. So, a check-in and check-out system for accountability and verification, our legal teams will, um, discuss the background clearance, uh, because every volunteer that comes into our school must go through a background check as well. Required training, mandated reporting and volunteering, and of course, we are data-driven as educators, so we love data, because it tells a story, and so we will always get a end-of-the-year survey as well. And always, alone, we can do so little, but together, we can do so much. So- So again, I truly believe that if we come together in some type of agreement or partnership, we can be the trailblazers in the metro Atlanta area, showing other counties how to do it. Showing them how the Clayton County government can work with the school system to meet the needs of that school system and enhance, improve our communities. So again, thank you for this opportunity. And if you have any questions, Ms. Ambles, would you like to come up a little bit with us? We can answer any questions we may have.
I, I do. I've heard so much about you, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, I've heard wonderful things about you as well.
I do have a question though, this sounds amazing. But have you all, before I get to that, because that would be Ms. Ambles, do you all do this in the school system? Do you give your, because I used to be a teacher. And I remember being told when I was trying to get my baby in time, you can't leave this building till a certain time. So are we extending this eight hours to educators? Are you doing the same thing in the school system before you do it here?
Yes, our educators, um, they have, we, we earn leave. Every, every month we learn, earn different types of leave. So a lot of principals, uh, for instance, will work with their staff if a, if a teacher needs to leave for honors day program, um, take your parent to school day. They are granted that opportunity without exhausting their leave.
So what I'm trying to see is this program, we can see how it's working at the school system.
Now, our employees are not leaving to volunteer anywhere else. They will possibly leave to attend their scholars, I mean their child's uh, personal obligations. But um, right now we do not have a volunteer leave program.
We don't have one at the school system, but the school system wants the board to let the employees go and volunteer. I mean, parents can go anyway, they figure that part out like you all do with the school system. But um, it's just nice to see if the program is already working, particularly in a system that's asking for that program to be initiated with the county. So this, this is an ask from the school system.
Yes, it is.
But the school system hasn't started it there yet.
Yes, because typically what you see is um, businesses um, will come to a school to volunteer. Um, you have, people will go to any type of other nonprofit to volunteer. On the weekends, I volunteer with other nonprofits. So um, never seen a, a for-profit, um, anyone uh, would volunteer for profit in those institutions, but um, we're open to anything.
Right. And has, um, from Ms. Ambles, has this been vetted with the department leaders? Because we're hearing about shortages. Let me tell you, I think this is amazing. The only thing I wish is that if the school is asking, that I will see you all extend it. Because again, teachers will also like to volunteer as well. So I think the school system has, how many employees now?
We have, um, right now we have seventy-four hundred employees and we have about four hundred and twenty-five vacancies.
Okay. And how many employees do we have?
We have almost two, two thousand seven hundred, Commissioner.
Thank you. That's all I have for questions.
Uh, good, good evening board and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I apologize, I'm a little stuffy uh, this afternoon. This is an item that I was going to bring to the board on, at the August eighth work session. We had it slated for a previous work session and it was pulled. Um, one of the things, this is, this is something that I was in communication with Commissioner Gregory, uh, bless her heart, before she passed away. Um, we do support, uh, let me, let me do this, if you, if, if the board will allow me. Can you give this to the Board of Commissioners? Because I brought my presentation that I will be presenting on the um, on the eighth. Uh, first of all, the purpose and objective of what we will be bringing to you all on the eighth is in dedication to Commissioner Songa, Sana Single Greg, Songa, I told you, I stopped up, bear with me. Sana Singleton Gregory. Um, we do have a core belief to contribute to our communities and our children. The Board of Commissioners recently approved our internship program and that has, we've already started working on that, should have interns in place soon. This would be a partnership among Clayton County Board of Commissioners, the public school system as well as our citizens. What we're trying to do is increase volunteerism with the Clayton County Public Schools as well as provide meaningful uh, community engagement. What our data has shown is that our uh, employees who are the majority are Clayton County citizens, they have a, and we have our state interview uh, out there right now. So I'm encouraging the board to provide feedback, have encouraged the COO and the DC uh, COO to make sure that our employees complete that survey. But previous surveys have, have, uh, have shown that our employees take pride in serving their communities. And a lot of them indicate that is the reason that they stay with Clayton County. Um, another thing is we do have our school leave policy. I, I will be bringing that to the board requesting an expansion because currently the school leave policy covers uh, employees who children are enrolled in the public school system. So we already give our employees eight hours annually of paid school leave to give them the opportunity to serve in their, um, to participate in their uh, children uh, educational activities. But I will be bringing that to the board next month, um, asking to expand that to all, all employees. Um, but what you have is my presentation that I'll be presenting. I don't know how deep you want me to go into it, but of course you have to look at the eligibility. We're asking that full-time Ca- uh, Clayton County Board of Commissioners employees be uh, allowed to participate. Uh, we have excluded a consideration for part-time employees right now. Employees who may be on a performance improvement plan. Um, any terminated employees, of course, are leave or doubt pay uh, status. Any probationary employee, we're asking the board to consider excluding them for, from participating at that time. Um, but what I will be bringing you all at the next, at the August eighth work session, will cover all of that and this is just a snapshot what I gave you. It's already scheduled to come before you. And definitely I want to say again, to expand it school, that we want to expand the school leave to cover all Clayton County uh, employees. That was put in place in night, but in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, Sheriff Tuggle in collaboration with, uh, I think it was Commissioner Gr- uh, Griswold at the time, uh, back in ninety-nine when I first started working with the county. So it's been in place that long and we just want to review that to make it equitable for all employees. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Rice or Ms. Ambles?
Well, thank you for the work that y'all are doing in this area.
Thank you for your long career and making us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is public safety enhancements. Uh, update from Chief Sweatt and Chief Roberts, I believe. Chief Roberts.
Is this part of the budget cycle?
Ma'am?
Is this part of the budget cycle?
Well, actually the timing is great based on, as the Commissioner indicated, um, we're in the budget process and I thought it was prudent that we come back before this board, much like myself and Chief Murkison did, to uh, give you a salary update. And the timing couldn't be more uh, on time in my opinion, based on the spirited discussion we're having this evening. So with that, our purpose, uh, to present to Board of Commissioners an update on where Clayton County Police Department and Fire and Emergency Services compare salaries with surrounding jurisdictions. So I'm gonna put my elbow up.
And I just want to say too, I, can I say something as a chairman? I just wanted to say, I did ask them to, to come as well because I wanted to get an update too on where they were and see where, because we have some different, we have other police departments that keep going up on pay. And so we're losing officers to other police departments. So that, this is a, and I'm sure firefighters as well. So I just wanted to see where we are too. So that was a request from me as well.
You are absolutely right Commissioner. I know that I get communications uh, via text from commissioners and employees and citizens when our peers uh, make their increases and that does have an impact. With that, I want to reflect on, just touching on your memory, what we presented in two thousand and two on January eighteenth. Our Clayton County PD recruits ranked fourth lowest with their starting salary of forty-one thousand five thirty-two out of fifteen similar agencies. Uh, Clayton Fire recruits also ranked fourth lowest with the same salary out of eight surrounding agencies. Clayton County PD certified officers, those are the ones that we hired that have already completed academy training with another agency. They ranked second lowest at that time with a salary of forty-three thousand six forty-seven compared to fifteen similar agencies. And Clayton Fire EMTs, firefighters and EMTs ranked second lowest with the same salary out of seven surrounding agencies. And these charts that follow just re- just reinforces what I just said. And they were presented to you in January of two thousand and twenty-two. That's the PD historical information slide, followed by Clayton County Fire Emergency Services historical information that was presented on January eighteenth by myself and then Fire Chief Murkison. Which brings us to today. As you look at that chart, which compares competing county police departments salary comparisons, you see that Clayton County PD is third from last with our starting recruit salaries and second from last with our starting certified officer salaries. As it compares to cities, we are second to last to the cities provided on these slides. If you're wondering why these cities were chosen, those are cities that we lost personnel to over the last year. And if you pay attention, we're right there next to Griffin PD and our call volume is nowhere right there next to Griffin PD. That's not where we should be in my opinion.
You're right on that one Chief.
Competing agency sign-on bonuses. Uh, you see that we're dead last in that category and keep in mind, we're not funded for sign-on bonuses. I took the initiative to create that sign-on bonus out of the vacant salary positions and it has been effective. Um, it would be nice if it's funded, but if it isn't, I'll take the initiative again and raise it myself so that we can be more compare, uh, competitive. As it relates to staffing, which is very important, you'll see designations for E nine one one personnel and sworn personnel. And you'll notice that the staffing numbers have decreased since two thousand and twenty-one. And what's key and vitally important, I need the board and the community to understand, dispatch is the foundation for all public safety in this county. If dispatch falls, everything falls. And if you pay attention, we went from two thousand and twenty-one staffing at sixty-five percent to forty-nine percent in twenty-two and forty-six percent in twenty-three. That's less than half of the personnel doing the same, if not more, work than they were doing in previous years. PD also decreased from the ninety-four percent in twenty-one to eighty-one percent in twenty-two and eighty-two percent in twenty-three to date. With that, I yield the floor to my public safety brother, Chief Sweatt.
Thank you Chief. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. So picking up where Chief left off on the fireside, we looked at five, total of four other county fire-based EMS providers to compare our data to. Uh, we looked at Fayette, Henry, Gwinnett and Cherokee. So when it refers to our firefighter recruits, which those are new individuals straight off the street who have zero training, they have no fire certification, no EMS training. It takes us roughly nine months to get them fully through the educational aspects and then an additional three or four months after that post to do the final testing before they're actually a fully vetted, permanent civil service employee who have met all the prerequisites to become fully certified and work for fire. So looking at the, the four other counties around us, we ranked third out of, out of fifth or the third lowest out of the fifth when it comes to firefighter recruit. Next up is firefighter EMT, which is the basic minimal requirements that we require our employees to have when it comes to working for fire. So out of the firefighter EMT role, we rank last out of the five jurisdictions. Next is firefighter paramedic. We are currently sitting third lowest out of the five, sorry. Firefighter paramedic currently third lowest out of the fifth. The next, we look at city fire-based EMS providers. What we are seeing here is most of our municipal entities who have fire-based EMS services, they don't have the resources to do the initial onboarding and training of those employees who have zero certifications. Therefore, when you look at this chart, you'll see the firefighter recruit, there's not really a comparison that we can look at. We looked at four other municipal um, entities, Morrow, Forest Park, Hable and Peachtree City. Oftentimes we see that the municipal partners who don't have the ability to train and onboard the initial non-certified people, they look to other agencies such as ours to basically pry those away because we have already spent the year plus to fully certify them. So looking at firefighter EMT, once again, looking at fire-based EMS partners, uh, we ranked third out of fifth from lowest to highest, then firefighter paramedic, third out of fifth as well. Next slide, we're looking at the paramedic only pay grade, which is simply just a paramedic certified individual who doesn't have any fire certifications. We looked at four other surrounding agencies, AMR, which is a private EMS service, Grady, which is a private, Henry Fire, which also has a paramedic only position, and then Metro Atlanta EMS. So looking at the paramedic only position, we are currently ranked third out of fifth from lowest to highest as well. So in closing, I'll for, to, back to Chief Roberts to give you the summary on police and then I'll follow up.
Thank you Chief. Um, as you view this summary slide, it still indicates that we're not where we should be as a county as it relates to our police department and compensation. The county comparison for PD recruit salaries indicate that we're the third lowest and our county comparison for officers is second lowest. When we compare to the cities, we're second lowest both in recruit and certified officer salary. Uh, also, recently I received the email notification that the relocation uh, incentive, which is a great incentive, I believe, is no longer being funded. Just for clarity, I know that nineteen of our uh, personnel, our PD personnel, use that incentive. That's a draw, especially for our candidates that are transitioning either from out of state or from South Georgia where the rent and mortgages are substantially less or even far north Georgia coming to the metro. And that was a great carrot of appeal to any potential candidates coming to Clayton County. So I would ask the board to reconsider that relocation incentive. Um, as I said, I believe it was nineteen Clayton County Police Department applicants that took advantage of that relocation incentive upon conception of the program along with, I believe, eight Clayton County Fire and EMS candidates. I really hope that we reconsider that option. And I'll say this, during the first presence, presentation, I gave a percentage recommendation of twenty-three percent and the board, we appreciate the ten percent in the increments that was provided at the time. I think it was great and beneficial to keeping and retaining great employees and drawing the same, comma, but as this board has indicated in others, we have our peers in public safety moving the goalposts since that uh, benefit was given. And I would ask the board to consider that remaining thirteen percent of the twenty-three that I presented during the original presentation in two thousand and twenty-two. And I understand it may come in increments, but our public safety employees are looking to us as many of you have indicated, to ensure that they can take care of their families while they protect this community.
That's right.
I yield the floor to you Chief.
Hold on, something for Chief Sweatt says, uh, for my clarification, when you say relocation incentive, were you talking about the stipends that we pay?
Yes sir.
And we still continue that, that still continue.
Okay.
Is that not it? I could have swore we funded it last year. Uh, discussion offline, thank you sir. Go ahead Chief Sweatt.
But Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I do have to say this, I'm glad that you figured that one out because there's no reason that any director should be in front of us thinking something's not funded when it's still funded, especially something as crucial as this, as I stated, which is our first responsibility of a board. So I'm glad that you figured that out and I have trust in you that you're going to go back to staff and make sure that the proper information goes forward. The other thing is, this would have been a great night to hear also from our um, sheriff's office because it's all of the public safety. I've said as a commissioner on this board over and over again, I will not separate our employees, especially those who are putting their lives on the line. And I correct myself on something. When we pushed for this last year, I believe we did leave off nine one one. And again, because of a work session we just had this spring uh, at ACCG and several retired police officers um, who are now in county management, help me to understand, you've got to fund those nine one one people as well. And I hope we can make that correction. And keep in mind, it took a lot to get the ten percent, because I personally asked for twelve. And the only other note I want to add, because you know, I get real passionate about these things because I work with folks that put their lives on the line all the time. It's as far as Forsyth County, we're losing people. Forsyth is paying sixty-nine thousand for their folks coming in. And I want to tell y'all, Clayton County is not as poor as we think. I remember one of my favorite things that Dale Bronner, who used to live in this county, once stated, "You got everything you need in the house." That's why I was grateful and thankful when we brought certain people aboard and when I keep hearing assurance that you all are going to go through this budget. The more we go through this budget and we prioritize, we can look at what you're asking for. Because now crime is going up in Henry County. It used to be that you all would stop it over there in Ellenwood at the, at the Atlanta line and the Fulton County line to keep it out of Clayton and Clayton with each of your help, including, um, our, those that are duly trained. We were the lowest, the largest minority county, with the most minority, but the lowest crime rate. So we've got to tackle this immediately and what really hurts, and I mean that. So we went from fourth. We were doing better when Dr. Anderson and I asked for this and had to have three meetings. And finally, in the last meeting, when it was put on as a discussion item saying, "We ain't talking no more about it," we voting on it. We went from fourth and now even with those efforts of only ten percent, now we're down to second and third? We have to prioritize better. And that includes our folks over into prison as well. I won't leave nobody out.
Oh, if I could, I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner Frank. Although Chief Sweat and I are standing here, Chief Murgensen and I stood here, but we're not displacing or minimizing any public safety needs. We were just afforded the opportunity to present to you then and to present to you now.
Thank you so much.
Chief Sweat. Yes, sir. Just in closing on the fire comparison, much like we're seeing on PD side, through the county comparison, our firefighter recruit is currently sitting third lowest. Firefighter EMT is the overall lowest. And then firefighter paramedic, which currently reached second highest, but it's the third lowest when you're looking from, from the, from the lowest to the highest. City comparison, once again firefighter recruit is no comparison because most municipal governments do not do that. Firefighter EMT, we're currently sitting third and then firefighter paramedic, we're sitting third as well. So, um, paramedic only, once again, third lowest. So back to the signing bonus and the relocation program, having those marketing tools back could definitely help us, provide us just another opportunity to advertise and hopefully attract additional personnel. And then what we are seeing on fire, and I'm sure just much is in PD, our disconnect appears to be when we initially hire those individuals, fully certify them, they come off probation as a permanent employee, that step is only five percent. So what our data is showing us, looking at, once again, county governments and fire-based EMS municipal governments, that our separation is starting to, where, where we're separating is that initial bump, that five percent that we are doing, once we onboard them, fully certify them a year, thirteen, fourteen months, once they're fully certified, that next bump is only five percent. And that's where we tend to get left behind as compared to, um, to the other agencies that we looked at. So once again, thanks for the opportunity. Um, that's all we have and we'll yield the floor.
Mr. Chair.
All righty.
I'm sorry. I don't apologize. Two more things I asked staff to go back and do. Over twenty years ago, and actually I could give credit to Chief Cohelus for this one. When I first started as a Colonial Life agent with this county, you all didn't have any voluntary benefits. But not only that, I learned at that time, any recruit was placed on a probationary period for eighteen months. We need to go back and look at what that probationary period reads as and look at how it's helping us or hurting us. And last time I checked over twenty years ago, it was hurting us. In particular, we lost some officers who wives received bills and then had to come and fight with the county to figure out, was it on duty, off duty? And are they going to be paid a hundred percent? And I could guarantee you, we have not brought it back before the board. So other cities, other counties, and understand, board members, I'm leaving even tomorrow to accounting. And I sit down with these people and when you all, per first responders, and they come from Clayton and they're saying, "Hey, Felicia, how you doing?" Yep, I got paid more and better benefits. That's the other thing, we need to look at our benefits. I have asked for that and since I've been on here, being in this industry for twenty-three years, we still don't quite have the benefits competitive to others. Griffin and other areas, the employee pays nothing for themselves. Again, if we're not taking care of these folks first, then we don't need to look at anything else. And then finally, the biggest thing that I want us to consider, and I brought it again before the board during COVID, what's putting us in a more disadvantaged position as well is the way we accrue our time. I can't tell anybody how to run their departments, but what I find is, in other areas, everybody's responding. But then in our areas, the people who accrue time the most are those that are in white shirts and that once, as they're going up through the ranks, and then we end up losing them to places like Henry County. So then they get this large payout from Clayton County to be able to now go work in other counties, i.e. Henry and Griffin. So that's how we're not only just losing personnel, but I want y'all to hear this, we're losing qualified personnel that can continue to train those that are coming up. That has to be revisited. When it comes to hazard pay, we need to pay these young people. These people are all, y'all already short-staffed. Are you short-staffed?
Of course.
Are you short-staffed?
Thirty-three positions.
So thirty-three positions, how many, Chief?
Sixty-two.
So we're all short-staffed and I think Sheriff just said, well, thanks Commissioner Davis at fifty, but he's asking for twenty-five. Everybody's short-staffed. So these young people never get a ti- get time to take off. They're the ones running and working, but the ones that can benefit from this time and a half accrued are those that, you know, in the old, regular world, they call the OGs. And then they go ahead and retire and go home and retire again. So we're kicking ourselves, we're putting ourselves as a board in this situation. So we need to add that as a note. And I'm okay with all of it going through the budget, budget cycle, but we're going to look at everybody together.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hamper.
Um, I just want to say that, um, thank you for bringing forth, um, I always ask for you, for you all to come forth and I definitely need, um, a report from you all as well over on the jail side. We need to, again, look, inspect what we expect.
That's right.
We want top quality throughout this county. We want to be an exemplary county, but we've got to start working together. PD, SO, uh, from on, down to our fire department, EMS, there's a, there's a disconnect. And not, not a disconnect, it's, it's, it's on, it's on our side as well. We've got to work together and that's why I'm going to be as transparent as possible until we get this right. Because we're going to get it right. Because we can't move forward if we're not taking care of our employees and the people here in Clayton County. And so it's not about one is better than the other, it's not about any of that. It's about all of us working together so we can do one thing and that's to better the quality of life for the people and take care of this county. And so again, I'm, I'm going to be asking things out of the budget cycle because I want to know what we need. Our jobs as commissioners, as ACCG has said, is to take care of FIRE, EMS, the sheriff's office, also on down to, um, on down to, uh, the courts. That's our job as commissioners and we need to start doing our jobs. You know, people don't want to come before us because they, and I, and I've heard this from many people because they're saying, "Oh, you know, I don't want to go before the commissioners because, you know, we, we get, we got, we get, uh, fussed at or we, you know, get asked different types of questions." I'm going to just put it in a nice way. But no, it's time for us to step up to the plate and take care of business. And that's what we're going to do. Our employees don't stay, they stay because they love what they do, you know? But that, when you're not getting paid for what you do, when you're not getting, you know, treated, treated the right way, that's why they leave and go to the other places. So we're going to continue to do this and we're, and we're going to keep it, like you said, as Miss, as Commissioner Hammer said, we're going to keep it by the budget cycle, but we've got to retain our highly qualified employees by any means necessary. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammer.
Yes, both chiefs, two chiefs. When we go through the process of hiring, training, and certified, do we have anything in place that an employee has to, um, maybe we have some obligation for them to stay twelve months, two years or whatever? Or they allowed to just go some other place once we train them?
You are absolutely on point, Commissioner. Yes, we do. For the PD, it's a twenty-four month period that the applicant has to be employed with our agency due to the cost of training. And that's mandated by law that it took to get them certified. Now, what we have found, because there's such high demand, there are organizations that are willing to pay the difference in the contract or the cost. And we can't stop them. If the employee wants to go and the organization has the funding to buy out their contract, they have left. But yes, ma'am, you're correct on the PD side.
And, um. You are correct because this board actually voted as I was up there working. Oh, yeah, guess what? We got one or two of your folks coming from Clayton County and y'all buying our dog. They pay those contracts out easily because you know why? Because they know they're going to get a qualified person in that arena. And that doesn't matter where they come from because I want us to understand it is PD that runs the, the training area for the police department and the sheriff's office as well as, um, you all have folks that go through their mandated training as well. So madam, um, I almost called you by the vice chair, I can attest to that and they brag on it. They, other areas brag on the fact, "We will stroke a check without a problem." You all don't want them, we'll take them.
Commissioner Hammer, FIRE has something very similar. Ours is spread out over a four-year commitment because our initial nine months minimum, just to get them through the initial education and then depending upon how successful they are on the end, testing through the state, it may take an additional three or four months. So ours is a four-year commitment currently.
So do you all find that other counties are buying, doing the same thing that they are on PD side?
They will buy them, um, they will leave us, go there, not blink an eye because they know that they're either being bought out by the entity who's trying to take them away from us or for the simple fact they'll just pay it and not worry about it because they get a substantial raise to go somewhere else. And the majority of the time, it's getting an increase to go run less calls, a lot with our municipal partners. Peachtree City just proposed and will ultimately pass a rather high pay raise, which will take them above even further than us. We're on track to run sixty thousand calls this calendar year. Average of fifteen, twenty calls per shift, per truck. Do that for fifty, fifty-five thousand or go to Peachtree City for sixty-eight and run three to five calls a shift.
Less stress, mentally.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you. This definitely will be considered and, uh, taken under advisement. Thank you for your presentation.
And good job, chiefs.
Thank you.
All right, next up is introduction to zoning. Mr. Reed.
Officer Winna has. Good evening again. At first I was like, why would somebody put me after that presentation?
Mr. Reed, Mr. Chair, can we ask Mr. Reed to speak into the mic? You're putting on your church voice and we can't really hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll say that again. First I was saying, why, uh, why does somebody put me after that presentation? But, um, I'm actually glad that I did because this actually has a direct impact as to some of the issues that you all are discussing. So although it says introduction to zoning, it's actually introduction to land use and zoning. So quickly, um, summary of the presentation, I'll just kind of do an overview of the basic elements of land use, an explanation of each tier, some practical issues relating to each tier. And then after that, I'll kind of do a walkthrough of an analysis of a land use change request and then list some additional resources. I'll also provide this slide to you all via email too because I have some links, uh, in there as well. So let me just kind of explain just generally what the basic elements of land use are. You start at the bottom, if you look at your base, it's your comprehensive plan. From that comprehensive plan, your next tier basically is your future land use map. Then after that is the zoning classification. And then on top of that would be your conditional use permit. I'll kind of explain each of those separately. And I wanted to do, um, you know, we had this transitive support study that the board looked at at the retreat and some of them was like, where are we, where we are and where we're going. There was a picture here that one of our current, uh, current land use has density of like one to eight units per acre where what we're trying to get to is the fifteen to twenty, uh, units an acre, at least as a residential. On the commercial side, you have some inactive, uh, empty, inactive times, uh, during the day to moving to more where you have activity at all times, um, throughout, uh, the day based on a mixed-use type plan. Well, getting from that first pictures or those first pictures to those second pictures don't start at the top. They start at the bottom with your comprehensive plan. So, um, so state law requires every local government to have a comprehensive plan and submit that comprehensive plan to the Department of Community Affairs. And, um, that comprehensive plan has to be updated every five years. Uh, the board amended, well, you actually have a comprehensive plan that goes out now to twenty thirty-four, that, um, was initially adopted, I believe in twenty fourteen. You amended it in twenty nineteen and then last year, uh, through Resolution twenty-two-two, twenty-two seventy-three, you authorized, uh, community development to start the initiation process for the five-year update. That will be sometime next year. So the current comprehensive plan can be found on the county's website and the land use goals are found on pages fifty to fifty-nine. If you look at that first, uh, handout, the gray that says land use, I took, uh, those, the comprehensive plan is more than just land use, but I took the land use goals out of that. That's on pages fifty to fifty-nine. And then actually, if you look on page fifty-two, one of the things that you all have identified as part of your comprehensive plan is, uh, if you look at the top bullet point, it said, um, "Provide training for the Clayton County Board of Commissioners and Land Planning, Best Practices, New Land Use Laws, and Case Decisions." So this is consistent with what you all have identified as part of your land use, um, goals. So the comprehensive plan, uh, these land used, land use categories become the basis for your future land use map. And so the future land use map, it identifies various character areas within the county. And ideally, that map is used to make decisions about land use. And if you look on page fifty-three, which for the public I'll show, that showed in twenty nineteen what you thought, um, the future land use map is. For those, it's kind of small, but the dark green areas are your agriculture, which is largely in the southern portion. And you've got some conservation residential, um, mostly in your southern to middle sou- southern portion of the county, some low density as you move up higher, all the way to mixed use, kind of in the top portion. Mixed use being the purple, uh, areas for, uh, those who can just barely see the, the colors.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
The, to the right of that, that's the Water Authority. We probably need to make a note of that when we're looking at, um, that green portion, agricultural.
Yes, this is just showing what your land map, um, was in twenty nineteen. And so this is what the land map looks like now. If you look at the second page, that's in the, uh, this is getting a little smaller, um, for the Pope folks and the public. But, um, this, you'll see a lot of blank sections. Some of this we tried to pull from the current, um, land use. It's not quite ideally one-to-one, but if you look somewhat in the middle portion, some of the general commercial areas that are south of Jonesboro are now, um, moving towards, um, residential. And there are other areas you can kind of see, um, and I can provide another map that maybe gives some more detail than the one there. But these some, these are the results of some of the decisions that have been made between twenty nineteen and, and now. So there are some practical issues that I wanted to talk about that relates to the, um, the future land use map. First, that the comprehensive plan that's, it's translated to your future land use map, those are planners that they take what this board wants to see from a comprehensive standpoint, identify the areas in each of your respective districts, what you want that to look like. And then they draft a plan that says, "Hey, this is what we want, or this is what you want to see in your particular districts as you move out into the future." That involves both short-range and long-range planning. And this map, uh, kind of reflects what you all as a board deem what you want development in your respective districts to look like. what you want development in your respective districts to look like over a period of time. Um, the, the map that I, was in twenty nineteen, if there were no changes, what, and let me go back quickly. So if there were no changes to your map, what you all had identified back in twenty nineteen is that the, the north, um, western, and all the portions around the big white area, Forest Park, Lake City, Morrow, would be l- mostly mixed-use, commercial, industrial. That's what you all had planned for, at least in twenty thirty-four. All right, so... So, some items to consider in a family, I mean, I'm sorry, a, uh, future land use map amendment request. So what does the board identify as a long-range plan for that particular area? So you'll hear people come and say, I want to do, uh, change from one to another. So the first thing that this board should look at is, okay, well, what does the map say? What do we want to see in our district as it relates to this particular portion of the area? And is what they're asking for consistent with what we said we want to see in our area in twenty thirty-four? Now, if not, so there's two things. What is this board saying about the importance of this comprehensive plan and guiding your decisions? That doesn't necessarily mean that you have to do what's here in your plan, because there may be, you know, what you looked at in twenty fourteen, twenty nineteen, the conditions on the ground may change. So you may want to make that change, but just keep that in mind as you're making changes to the future land use map. You are changing what the county is going to look like going forward, and there may be reasons for that.
And, um, one addition, though, the service load, that needs to be buried in mind, because that's why, again, I brought before the board about the impact fees, because you're already telling us that, hey, the board is communicating one thing through the comprehensive plan, but we're doing another. But this board, I have never seen us plan when it comes to increased service to these areas as we are approving them as well, and that's imperative for us to consider as a board.
That's right, and, and I'm going to give you, um, a, a practical example of that in, and when we get to the end. So, so that, that first tier, after your comprehensive plan and, um, being the la- family, the, um, future land use map, the next tier after that is zoning, and that's the definition, the legal definition of zoning, which I'm not going to read for you. But basically, it just gives you the right to set what uses are going to be in certain portions of the county. That's done through a zoning ordinance, which basically spells out what is done in those zoning districts. Those are legal definitions. I'm not going to go through all of that. So our zoning ordinance is found in Appendix A of the code, and they're basically broken down into four general categories. Your residential, your mixed-use, your commercial, and your industrial. And those are your zone, your various categories in each of those, um, general categories. And so the zoning ordinance identifies what types of development can take place in each zoning district, and those types can be both through size and height of structure, lot size, setbacks, street parking, other considerations. And so keep in mind that the zoning ordinance is not your comprehensive plan or the future land use map. That is two steps up from that. It basically implements what you want to see. So I want to see high, uh, mixed-use, commercial, industrial in the northwestern portion of the county. So now I'm going to put zoning classifications on those land map classifications that meet that MXI or other types of mixed use. So again, questions to consider in rezoning applications. Was there consideration of the description of the character of the area before rezoning the par- the parcel? What did the peri- the area look like at the time that they are coming to make a rezoning, uh, application? And is this vote that this board is making, is it's consistent with that description? And does this decision, if they're, again, I'm just using the northwestern portion, if they're trying to change that to residential, does that further the character of the area that you all identify you want to see in your, in your comprehensive plan and the future land use map? So the top use, again, we started at the, uh, comprehensive plan, moved to future land use map, then zoning, um, ordinance. Then the last thing is the conditional use. That's the top tier of your pyramid. And that's basically a use that's designated, um, for special conditions as authorized by the board. I'm summarizing that, but that's the legal definition, uh, in the code. And what conditional uses do they allow you all to set certain development in certain areas as you see fit? Uh, and based on, on certain criteria. And that includes distance types of use, impact on surrounding uses. And those, sometimes you can, you, you use a, uh, conditional use permits in areas where it's less burdensome to have to rezone the entire property. Um, and it gives you a little bit more targeted area, okay, I want to put this here as opposed to rezoning the entire area. And I'll explain a little bit why that is more important in a minute. So again, questions to consider for conditional uses permits. I'm not going to go through all of these, um, specifically, because all of these are found in Section thirteen, sixteen F of the zoning ordinance. You all have identified, these are the things you look for when a person comes for a conditional use permit. These are the things you look at to determine whether that is, uh, appropriate or not, including, again, what does the conditional use outweigh the potential negative impact on, uh, neighboring properties? So again, that's the whole pyramid. I want to give you an example. So, um, so just, this is a property somewhere, I'm not even going to say where, it's just, it's currently on your map as general commercial. And so the, if you look at your, um, comprehensive plan, this, the big packet, you all have identified general commercial as this definition. Basically, it's the most intense allowing facilities that target larger businesses that would normally be community business and general business. And again, because your future land use map is GC, the zoning, current zoning classification for that particular property would be GB. So I say, see, it's attached sheets. So if you look at, um, what I provided to you as Section three point two-one, and I'm going to show, let the, um, public see that as well. So where you see permitted uses, everything, when you rezone a property... So somebody may come and say, well, I want to put a gift shop there. If they choose, that gift shop goes out of business. Everything in the permitted use is now authorized in GB. So, um, so that is important. The reason why I say conditional uses are a little bit more tailored, because when you're rezoning a property to, from one to another, you're basically saying, everything that's listed in this permitted use is now authorized to be used in this particular spot. Even though they may apply for one thing, by rezoning, you're allowing everything in that zoning classification to be put in that spot. Um, and then, okay, and then if you go, okay, I'm going to go back to my slide. Okay, so, oops, sorry. I think I was down at, uh, twenty-one? Yeah, can you go back to the, uh... Yeah, if you go down to the bottom, like twenty-one on the... Yeah, okay, thanks. Okay, so... Okay, so then, now, this particular fictional applicant, they want to change the fan- the future land use plan, I'm sorry, future land use map from GC to HDR, which for people who are watching, HDR is your highest single-use residential dis- uh, density. Those would include your multiple-family residential district, RM, or mobile home district, RMH. They also want to rezone from GB to RM to build an eight-building apartment complex. And if you look at, uh, and I won't, uh, I won't, um, minimize that just for sake of time, but RM, the uses within the RM district are multiple-family dwellings, row homes, town homes, condominiums, family daycare homes, home occupation, as well as some institutional public uses, uh, as well. So if they were able to change your general commercial to now to a high-density residential, you're now changing the whole character of that area to a residential area. Now, this fictional applicant also wants a conditional use permit to use one of the, two of those buildings for a retirement facility, because under RM, in order to have a retirement facility, you all have to say that that is a condition, that's a use that's authorized on that property, and it has to go through the whole things that I listed for, um, Section thirteen, um, point sixteen. So, again, um, the first question to ask when they're come to you all is whether that change from the future land use map is consistent with the comprehensive plan long-range plans. And so if it's not, again, if you're looking at that northwestern portion of the, of the map, okay, well, maybe there's a reason to change. Uh, uh, general commercial is not really working in this area as we thought it would be back in twenty fourteen. So that may be a reason to change, but if there's not that, um, if you don't make that, um, conscious decision, if it's just because someone asked me to change it, if they use that in that area, you are basically foregoing for the long-term, any general commercial use of that property. Uh, there are some ways to get it back, but it's very, very difficult. You're changing the, you're changing the course of the county's development for the foreseeable future by changing your land use map. It, especially if they're using it in the way that they're saying they want to use it. So that's the first thing to think about when you have a family, a, a future land use, uh, map request. Once you decide you want to change that long-range plan for the area, the next consideration is whether you want all of the things that are listed in that zoning classification in that area, not just what's requested in the application. Because again, if that, what they do fails, because their property is zoned that way, they can do everything that's permitted in that zoning. And again, does that request, everything they have listed there in their rezoning, does that meet their long-range plans for that area? I mean, in, in each of your particular district, wherever that request is being made. So some, you know, maybe commercial's no longer desired, but it, do you really want high-density residential? Or do you want single-family or mixed-use? Those are just some things to consider. Then, once you change the family of the, I keep saying family, future land use map and rezone, uh, the property, then you consider whether conditional use for, um, uh, for the, uh, what did I say it was? The retirement. Is that appropriate? Is that used tailored in line with the code? Is there a detrimental, uh, effect for the conditional use on surrounding uses? Uh, I know initially, when I had suggested that each ask is taken separately, there was some question, well, why are we doing that? Because as you see, each request is a separate inquiry and analysis by the board. So when they're coming up there and I say, uh, um, board, y'all aren't talking about rezoning right now. You're talking about the family, the future land use map, because the reason why I say that is because I want you to think now that you can, now that I've shared all this with you, that your analysis of what they're coming to you to talk to you about is a whole different thing than what they may be sending, they're talking, oh, well, I have elevations and that, that doesn't really matter. What you're looking at is, do I want the long-term change in development in my district to change from general commercial to high-density residential when they're talking about a future land use map rezoning or change? Each request has its own immediate impact on the community, as well as a long-term blessing, impact on county development. And there's no quick fix. There's no quick fix to change the short or long-term effects of the board's zoning decision. So if you decide, yes, we want to do this, and then a couple of years from now, it's like, eh, we don't like this, you're stuck with it, uh, a- again, absent some, um, extraordinary circumstances. So, uh, again, I'm going to send this all to you. If you want to read some of this, the, the first link I gave you is really a good one. It's kind of dense, but it's a good, um, thing from ACCG. And there's, um, a little smidgen, um, in, uh, the county's sources of land from the power that talks about zoning, uh, that is also kind of useful as well.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, so, so now how does this come into play with the overlay districts?
Okay, so you have your underlying zoning, say your, say your, um, your, um, residential. Then you have, over top of that, you have additional conditions that will be part of the overall zoning of that property. So you may have some various development standards that are part of it. There may be some beautification or other types of parts that are part of that overlay, which sometimes, which is why the board will make, say, well, we don't want the overlay to affect these parcels anymore, so you will carve that part out. Or you'll say, oh, you know what, I want to expand this to include these parts. And so you'll include the overlay, because those types of, develop, those type of development you want to see in that particular area, or not see it in a particular area.
I'm dealing with that now.
Yes.
Erica, Uzika, anyway.
Any other questions for Mr. Reed?
Not a question, but, um, Commissioner, um, Hamburg, remember, we make those decisions on the overlay district. So if there's something that needs to be changed in any district in terms of the overlay, it just needs to come forward to board. Uh, we realized that when we did the overlay district down in the Panhandle area, which I had to go back to that, because we did keep it, um, as close to its original state as possible. Those were my first meetings on this board, first zoning meeting, and I realized what the folks wanted down in District Three. But I did notice that there was an incorrect section, as you and I noticed, that was inconsistent with the area. So, um, the board just needs to bring it forward. But also, I want to know, what are our hours of our community development division? What's the hours that they're open, because this comes out of their area?
Ms. Tejiki.
What are the hours we're advertising?
Do you mean our work hours?
Now, when I went by your office, I want to know, what are your current hours for your open, that you're communicating to the public?
Um, our, our hours to the public is, uh, from eight to three.
Is there any other division that works eight to three in the county, chief, COO?
Is it that you work, or is it you're open to the public?
We are open to the public. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are open to the public. Those are the hours we are open, um, and to the public. From three to five, we start closing and start solving problems. Um, during the course of the day, we might have applications that have issues, people calling about their permits, about their license, because also, we are the coordinating department for the major county review agencies. We have to coordinate those, so those are the times where staff have time to really talk. We went there for two reasons, during COVID, and also we figured out that was a system that gave us the best, the best opportunity to deliver services.
Um, how many employees do you currently have?
We have, um, a, a kind of fluctuation. We have about twenty-eight employees right now.
Twenty-eight, and that's in the community divi- how many people sit at the desk that the public engages with?
Six.
So our hours are from eight to three, and twenty-eight employees, and six are the ones that are engaging with the public.
Yes, and also remember, our planning division is not in that building.
Okay.
Our planning division is in a different, um, in a different, um, building.
So again, just, I'm trying to get a good ratio here. The twenty-eight is who's in that building, or is it with the planning division as well?
It's including the planning division as well.
Because I got to tell you what I've happened, what has happened, and I want you all to hear this. I've had to go through the DCOO, because there are... hear this, I've had to go through the DCOO because there are folks that were trying to bring developments to our county and needed to drop off things, and the office was closed. And I did a little bit of research, and there's no other county that I know of that a public facility is only open from eight, eight to three. And especially if you've got your ratio. And how many, currently, how many positions are we at this time subcontracting out for you and your division for community development? Because that's really the root of our county.
We have inspections and planning. Their numbers fluctuate because they bring in more folks as they need to do the work they, as the contract specifies.
And those folks, what are, what are their, you said inspections and planning? And so they have a role in your operations as well?
Yeah, they do, on the planning side, they do the analysis.
Is that the full twenty, included in the twenty-eight?
Yes.
So how many full employees do we have over there?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. We have like about twenty, maybe? We are a small department that do a whole lot.
Right, I know, that's what I'm trying to understand.
If you check, if you check other metro counties, we're actually delivering more than you can think we're delivering.
Mr. Chairman, can I? And I understand that, Mr. G. K., but we have to also come up to what other counties who are progressing are doing. And when the builders come in, they're saying that the times that they need to, again, drop off things are not conducive because the doors are closed. And so if there's any way that we can look at still servicing them and doing what you all need to do as far as getting the, the other things that you say you need to get taken care of, I would like to do that because we need to look at, we, we need to look at our level of service and making sure that we get these builders in. And remember, we talked about it not taking so long with the process. So I think what Commissioner Franklin is saying, what I'm saying as well, we just need to look at getting you some help over there. You do do a lot, and I will give you, you all do a lot over there, but we've got to, we've got to up our level of service. Not saying that you aren't doing what you need to do, but making sure that those builders can come in and get done what they need to be done so we can get the county moving forward.
Or else we just leave.
I'm glad, and Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm glad these questions have been asked, because when it's been said, it could be construed as if nothing is being done. We have a system where people upload their plans to our system. You drop off plans also, but we, we require, we want folks to use our online system to upload the plans. When you upload the plans, the review process starts. Then you can come drop off the plans, because the plans are usually done, if it's commercial, so that fire and our building review can stamp the plans when it's approved. Secondly, I have, what I've done in my whole career, we live and die by the code, whether the code is good or bad, no shortcuts. So when folks come to our department and say, we want to do this way, half of the debates I have are folks who don't want to comply with the code. I had one this afternoon. We asked a lady to get her contractor to talk to our contractor. All well and good, she wants to play the intermediary, and we all know, when technical things are translated, they're not the same. Allow the contractor to engage. So our process for anybody who knows Community Development Department in Clayton County, from when I walked in here, it's like day and night, from when I walked in here. I'm not doing, this is not my first radio, folks. No, it's not. I've been doing this for a long time, and one of my talents is process improvement. We are one of the most documented department despite some of the things that I hear. It's not about me, it's not fair to the ones who actually do the job. We have flow charts, we have process improvements, all that is there. You all, and let me take a little bit, a little bit of liberty, Mr. Chairman. When I walked in here, those things didn't exist. Do you know in 2011, you can build a house without a site plan in Clayton County? That was perplexing to me when I walked in. I didn't just come off the street. So I agree, one of the reasons why we're not hiring so many people, we don't have the My department, I redesigned when I walked in here. It didn't have the counter that it has today. We have six counters to do with customers. We had to send our planning division across the street from the Spy View Rec Center, because we don't have any space in the building. So even if I, okay, we, we are entertaining right now, we are in the process of securing some services, third-party services. I'm not mentioning what it did, because I don't think the central services is ready to announce. But we're entertaining a remote work, work for them. Because what they do, they don't need to be in our building to do it. And if that will get us a break in their price quote, fine. So, but anyway, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time because Attorney Reed have done. And just to, just to cap off, just to cap off, what you hear from Attorney Reed this evening is very important. It is, it's technically sound. This is what we do all the time. That's why we say no. That's why some of you commissioners who talk to me about projects, I say, Commissioner, I hear what you're telling me, but my department's recommendation is denied. Why? Because of what you just said. Guess what? If any of the applicants sue Clayton County, guess who going to be sitting on the horse seat? Me and this gentleman trying to defend me.
Sir, no offense, but it's the board. Suits come to the board, so please don't do it.
But the person who goes to court, actually.
The expert witness.
Yeah, the expert witness, it's me.
We are clear.
But, Mr. G. K., I, you know, you know, I got you, I got your back. But what I, what we got to do is, though, we're still, we still need to, I haven't heard anything bad, I'm just saying that we got to move these projects. It's taking too long, the builders are complaining, they're just saying that we're taking too long. And I, I have looked up other community developments, their hours are eight to five. And so they're there, they're, and if we can help you in any way, I know you've been in this for a long time, you know your job. But if there's something that we can do as a board, because that's our job, is to help you all do better and get better and move forward, that's what we're here to do. And so, again, I commend you for what you do, but there's some things that we still need to go in and work on as well.
One other question.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner.
Has your need for space been brought before the SPOS? Because we're getting ready to rebuild a whole building, so. I know you went through the historical lesson, and trust me, that first meeting that I referenced, that zoning meeting was in the Panhandle because one of those projects went belly up without information that we could find. Remember, I came over to your office looking for it? So let's all, I do agree that, thank you for what you brought. But at the end of the day, you're stating a problem. How long has the problem existed if you're saying space is the reason that you don't have adequate staff, that you're shutting down earlier than other counties that are as progressive? Have you reported that and have you included it in the SPOS planning process so that we can find that space as we're building the new county building? I, I want to solve issues.
Yeah, yeah. If, if, if you permit me to rephrase, space is not the issue for whatever you're hearing.
No, you just said, we don't have space.
No, no, I said, you said, how many people do I have? I was telling you how many people I have. The people I have is paired with technology. We have the right technology. And the only, in terms of space, discussion of space, yes, I talk to the COO all the time about space, I meet with, I'm the director of buildings, Ben Hopkins, we've been discussing about different things about space. And so it's not, one of the things I'm going to do, talk to him this evening, is give my staff notice, we're going full open, open up the eight to five. We're going to eight to five. But more importantly, I don't mean it take much time. Remember, we have four, four reviewing agencies in the county.
I understand.
We are coordinating, so when someone submits a plan, a brief history, when somebody submits a plan, we do building review, the MEPs, which is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing reviews, fire, do life safety review, TND do the land development review, the water authority do their own, and if it's food related or agri, then the health department does theirs. Zoning review, folks, and rocket science, that happens real fast. Building, if they are meeting the building requirements, which is not a whole, but all these agencies work together. It's when the applicant is, something is happening, yes, sometimes we drop it, we didn't distribute the plans on time. I'm not going to stand here and say, Community Development Department, it's on me. Sometimes the plans are not distributed, or when they distributed, the right requirements are not there. So space is not the issue. One thing I would do immediately is open up the work hours. Again, we just bear in mind, you have four major departments reviewing plans. And what I've asked my staff to do, sometimes we, we don't mind taking it on the chin, I told them, the part we do is not rocket science. Tell the applicant who is holding up their plans. I'm fine with that. We, we have studied in, in, in the technical review committee, telling the applicant, after that initial meeting, talk directly with that, with that agency, so that it shudders the communication gap. So talk directly to them because they know exactly what you need to do in that discipline.
We need to put this on another work session because I'm real confused now. Let me tell you why, because you brought before us to do a concierge method, so we could just go deal with this. I think y'all got the folks to figure this out. I just see holes in the operations that we can shore up, but I have belief that y'all will shore it up and will make sure that our codes are correct. Thank you for the presentation tonight, to help us to understand and to think through the decisions that we're making and the long-term impacts. And thank you for agreeing to open those hours up so that we can begin to compete. And I have faith that you all are going to look at the twenty-eight employees to see if we need more, because it's like anything else, the community development, that's almost like our business engine of the county. And so with that, if we don't have that moving along, whether we have impact fees or not, people are going to be like, man, I got a headache trying to deal with Clayton County. So let's fix that loop, and then we can make better decisions, and I think we're on our way.
CEO.
Yes, Commissioner, so you asked a question about space. We are going through a, a space limitation issue. We're going through our growing pains, point in case to look at Annex Two to be specific. Our HR department is now housed over in Annex Two. Once we now move a lot of those programs and services into the new admin building, then that will free up additional space for, in this particular instance, the community development, with the planning unit, all will be under one roof because now we'll have them all synergistically working together. But as we continue with the buildout of the county, that's kind of been part of the challenge, and we're trying to work through that, so.
That's awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, one thing that we, when we were in COO's leadership meeting, you all asked us, how can we change the culture? This is where we start, with these discussions out here in front of the public, and us being transparent with you all and telling you what the issues are and what we need to fix. It's not a, I got you, but it's a, it's a conversation that we need to have so we can work together, again, I'm going to always say this, to move this county forward. So please, staff, anyone that, you know, that we're not, let's get out of our feelings and focus on the people. And so we've got, in order for us to change the culture, we've got to start giving exemplary service, and that's what we're going to do. And I just thank you all for all that you all do from over here on down. And again, thank you, Mr. G. K., for what you all do. And again, it's just time for us to step it up. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. SPOS projects update.
He probably going to go on speed.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to apologize in advance, typically I have a very quick presentation, but tonight, there's about fifty projects. So I'm going to give a very, very high-level introduction. I did ask for the PDC team that manages these projects to be here. If you have a specific question, they can answer that, but we'll jump right in. I want to recognize the team, because this team came together about two years ago whenever we moved internally to managing the SPOS program. So Marty Fox is our Assistant Director overseeing the Plan, Design, and Construction Division. Marty has been with the county for over twenty-five years. He came here fresh from working out of high school and do a couple of things, and he came straight here. We also have Carol Clayton, John Mazurala III, and Todd, Todd Smiley here. That's the team that does the actual project management, working with the GCs and the A&amp;E firms and other stakeholders throughout the county to make sure that the projects are being managed properly in decency and order. We also have Otis James, Malik Sherad, and Cedric Latham. That is our inspections team. Malik and Cedric have moved over from our O and M, our O and M team, and I'd be remiss if I did not recognize my other right hand, Guillermo Mendoza, our Assistant Director of Operations and Maintenance, who's here with us this, this evening. Recently, we were able to fill the position of the production project manager, project production manager. That's our communication piece, so there will begin to see additional information going out to the public to really hone in what it is that we are providing as a service to the citizens. I've broken the project list into four different groups. The legacy projects, those are the, that's the program from oh-four, oh-nine, and fifteen that was managed from Mortal, Mortal Alzabelli, the Atlas Team, or CGL, I believe, managed some of the projects back in oh-four. Some of those projects we picked up because they were already in process, some of the projects had not been started, so we've picked those up to, to work on them. We have the bonded projects from the twenty-twenty SPOS. Those are the projects that we went ahead and got funded outright so that we were able to move them forward. Many of them are one-off projects that will be similar to what we anticipate the next SPOS program to look like. And then the current non-bonded twenty, SPOS twenty projects and the forecast, what we're looking at the next set of projects that you will see some information coming from very shortly. We'll jump in first, the legacy projects, a project that is near and dear to Ms. Clayton's heart, and I know you, Ms. Commissioner Franklin, the Flint River Community Center. We are currently working on a civil design, that's the stormwater on the back fields and some of the water that's around the site. We have put up the fence on the back of the property. Thank you, Commissioner Franklin, for really emphasizing that and the need for that for the homeowners around. We have the monument sign out front. There were some issues with the HVAC system that we had to fix on the inside of the building, and there are still building leaks that we are still working on. And I know you are tired of me saying that we're working on it. That is unfortunate process as we go through it. The Lake Spotty Recreation Center, Todd Smiley has been working with that one. We are on the downhill slope for our locker room enhancements. Essentially, the issue we ran into there is the showers, the drain was opposite from where the water was coming down, so we've installed drains to ensure that as people walk through the locker room, they're not walking through shower water from someone else. The Sona Singleton Gregory Senior Center, ma'am?
Repeat that for me again.
So if, if you are in the locker rooms, walking out to the pool area. The showers are as you walk through. So if someone is taking a shower and the water is hitting inside and then going on the floor, it was running out into the walkway. So we are installing shower drains on the back end of that to ensure that as you walk through, you're not walking through water that's gone onto someone else from the shower. Yes, exactly.
Are we going after the people that did that wrong?
It was designed appropriately as it, they installed it the way it was designed, so we are looking into that from that perspective. This is one of those legacy projects that we are really enjoying. The Sona Singleton Gregory Senior Center, one of the things that previous- The Sona, Sona Singleton Gregory Senior Center, one of the things that, uh, previous, uh, project management did was remove a lot of the, uh, site packages, uh, so we've had to go in and redo those. Uh, there is an issue with some supply chain issues with that project, uh, but we are moving forward. Also, the Sector Two Police Precinct, uh, there is some supply chain issues, but that is moving forward. Um, the last of the site enhancements is the Northwest Library. Um, there is a contract issue, but the Central Services Department is working through that with the, uh, GC. The design is complete. Um, a next project is the Correctional Institute. There was an expansion that was done on the building. Can't go into too much detail on that one because of some other issues that we're dealing with. But we are almost done, uh, with the punch items and the warranty items. There was also an issue with the striping contractor, but I believe that has been rectified. And so those items are being worked through. Uh, the International Park, Water Park, um, Todd Smiley is assigned to that. We opened last year, had a very successful season. Uh, we are doing refurbishment of the actual, uh, water slide. Uh, the, the contractor should be back prior to opening of the season. They have already taken care of the inside of the slide, it's the exterior of the slide. Uh, it just needs to be, um, aesthetically improved so that it looks proper. Um, there are some warranty items that we're also working through. The small development, business development incubator, uh, we are in a facility acquisition phase. Uh, we have had United Consulting go out and do an assessment of the facility. We brought in subject matter experts, uh, that we work with, and we've had our staff also inspect the building. Uh, we've provided those items to, uh, Ms. Dees, who provided them to the current owner of the facility that we're working on. Uh, and they are making repairs based on those recommendations.
That's a large building. Can we consider looking at, since it's small business development, maybe housing some of the folks that either had spatial issues or don't have spatial issues?
My understanding from a programming perspective is the incubator is housed within the building, but there are also other,
I saw it.
other groups going into it, yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. But I'm saying I saw the building as nice as.
Yes, ma'am, it's about twenty thousand square feet. It's, it's a substantial building. Um, the county records and archives, uh, this is a, a very fun, interesting building. Uh, we did the, the initial build out at the old bunker, which the IT department lovingly calls the vault. But it also, at the time, housed parts of our elections department. Uh, as you all know, we cannot directly impact an election, so we've kind of piecemealed the project to move it along to, we could house the data center and do some other things. Uh, but now at the last component, what we have to do is a build out for elections in a timeline and way that won't impact an election, so we've got to build them out first. And then we'll be able to move them post, most likely, the twenty-four election. Because I always thought elections were the primaries and the elections, but as I've heard from Director Dozier, they are an ongoing process. So, uh, that is very key, is to not impact elections in a negative way. Um, we will do the build out for them, which we are getting ready, uh, to go out for, does, no, we have a design, uh, firm that we are getting ready to select, to bring to you all as a recommendation. Uh, and then we, once we have a space for elections, elections will move, and they'll be able to finalize the vault for, um, I, IT to move into. Which they're already operating in the space, there's just some space they don't have. Uh, the Welcome to Clayton County signs, which is a, a hot button, if I could say. It's, it's a topic that I know comes up a lot. Uh, we have worked through several iterations of ways in which to get it done. We have a vendor that is doing a design build that has worked with other counties and municipalities to make this happen. Uh, we are working with communications and transportation development to identify, uh, locations throughout the county at the entrance points, uh, that have high vehicular traffic so that we can maximize, uh, the marketing component of that. The Rivers Edge Trail System is a project that, uh, is within the overarching trail system. Uh, it is a part of the trail system that was promised a long time ago. Um, Phase One was complete, Phase Two is designed, and we are pending the notice to proceed for the Phase Two construction. Uh, the board al- already authorized dollars to go ahead and move forward with the design of Phase Three and Four. We are moving forward with that. Uh, and then, once those are complete, we'll see where we sit in terms of construction dollars. We believe we'll be able to complete the construction of Phase Three and Four, which will complete the trail component. The maintenance facility has already been, uh, demolished. We still have to identify exactly what needs to happen with that pro shop. Uh, there, there needs to be some good, strong engagement with the community about what they want, what they're looking for, and how we make sure that happens for them.
Can we sell it back to them and let them have that piece?
I, I don't make those decisions, I make recommendations, the board makes those decisions.
Can we look into that? The only thing is, we had to see how it was funded.
Yes, ma'am.
But I was promised that that board, that building was going to have somebody sitting in there every day about two years ago, and it still boarded up.
Yes, ma'am.
And I drove the areas, I conned the district quite often, and, um, had to call in because our building was out of code.
Yes, ma'am.
The weeds were as tall as me. I know I'm short, but the weeds were as tall as me.
I think they were as tall as me in some areas, ma'am. Uh, the VIP complex renovation, uh, Phase One was complete. Uh, there was mold in the building, we had to close the building. That's been remediated. The facility was put back into use, and it's, and it's working well. Uh, Phase Two of that renovation is, uh, the incorporation of the stadium space to make an amphitheater, and then to tie back into the existing facility from a power and, um, uh, AV perspective. Bonded projects is our next topic. Uh, again, I'm going very high level. If you have a specific question, you can feel free to ask it. Uh, I would most likely defer to a project manager. They are here to answer any questions if you'd like to hold them to the end. Uh, the County Administration Building, um, Todd Smiley is listed as the project manager for the facility. Marty Fox and I have been intimately involved with that project since conception. Uh, and we are here and willing to answer any questions on that. Uh, there are some design components, as we've switched parcels, uh, that the design team is working through with the City of Jonesboro and stakeholders to ensure that we are still meeting the exact expectation of what we have for that signature building, which will be the signature building for the county for the next five decades at least. Uh, the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, uh, we brought an opportunity to the board. Uh, the land swap took place, so the Flint River Community Center is in our inventory. We're working through stabilizing that facility. We have worked with Dr. Adams on a design and what he's looking for him from an expectation standpoint. Uh, he is bought in, his board is bought in. As we work through, uh, getting that stabilized, we're going to bring in an A and E firm to design out what they need to be able to serve the community. Several of these projects, like I mentioned before, were specific, uh, major renovation items or repair items, which are allowed within the Sploes. So, uh, the Justice Complex Roof Repairs, the Gray Mile, which takes you from the Sheriff's Office down to the housing units, had substantial leaks. Uh, we replaced that entire section, and we've done some other repairs on the courthouse roof. Uh, the Justice Complex Electrical Repairs, the Justice Complex, because it houses, uh, people for an extended period of time, um, we have to make sure they're staying, there's power in the facility because the toilets and other electrical items that are in the space, HVAC, for example, it runs on a generator. So the, uh, the switchgear takes it from, uh, utility power over to the generator. It was original to the building, it was having some issues. That has been replaced, and it is working appropriately.
One important note.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought because of, you've gone through several projects that you had to kind of gracefully go over that are not working out as well, we're still dealing with leaks. But I thought one of our, um, fixes for that, or fix for that, was to work backwards and hire a construction company that would then turn around and help us hire the A and E design company. Is that not true? Did I have that wrong?
So the, what you're talking about is called design build method. It goes faster. The issue with design build is you're hiring your general contractor who is moving very quickly. And they're, in many cases, designing the building as they are demolishing or building. So in most of the projects that we, that are legacy projects, that the previous project management firm managed for the county, you would have fifty to seventy-five change orders throughout the project, which then inflated what we were looking at in terms of cost. Uh, there is a project that I will mention here in just a moment, the County Fueling Center, which is coming out of the ground, there's been three change orders to date. Uh, one of them is a time extension, because the contract has, requires a change order, and that's because of, uh, supply chain issues with the electrical. Uh, the second one is a deductive. We have something in space that we're going to be able to utilize, so we don't have to pay out for it. Uh, and the third one is a design issue that we're working through, that we, we are talking through right now.
Okay, we can follow up on the offline on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, though.
Uh, so for context, though, we do what's called a design bid build in most of our projects now. We hire the A and E, they design it, we know exactly what we have to deal with. And then we take that to the street so that the firms know exactly what they're bidding on. So we can bring you more solid numbers of what the projects.
That's what I was speaking on, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The continuing with bonded projects, Annex Three HVAC Replacement. Uh, our former Assistant Director Rocky Clint Dinning led that, he's retired. Uh, he had twenty-seven years to the county. Cooling Tower was repaired, it had some major issues, was causing some issues, particularly during tax season. Uh, it wasn't able to keep up with cooling. Uh, the Annex Two HVAC Replacement, um, the chiller was completely replaced, and that's taken care of a lot of the issues in Annex Two. Uh, there are some additional issues with the way that the system was originally designed. Uh, we're working through that, and that will probably come as a later, um, major cost expectation, expected to the county. Uh, the Annex Two Flat Roof Restoration, um, the third floor, which HR currently resides in, had substantial leaks. Uh, we've replaced that, the roof, and my, to my knowledge, there are no leaks in that space at this time. Uh, the Police Department Headquarters HVAC Repairs, um, that HVAC unit and system is original to the building. Uh, we replace SWDs, and just to define SWDs, because I know some folks are going to ask me what that means, it is a self-contained, water-cooled unitary device. So the system as a whole runs on water and not freon for the most part. So it takes water out to the cooling tower, the water cascades on the tower, so it cools off, dispels heat. It goes back through the building, and then air goes over the cooler coils in the space that then cool or heat the building, depending on what you need to do. Justice Complex Courtside Floor Repair, Replacement, uh, there was the original carpet throughout. Um, as we all know, uh, as you go everywhere, particularly in a public environment, uh, people walking anywhere or bringing everything into the facility, carpet tiles, uh, and the fibers, hold that, hold that material. Uh, we've gone through, and we've put in, uh, lot, luxury vinyl plank throughout the building. We've had nothing but positive reviews from the folks in the space, and it is working very well. Um, the Aquatic Center Flat Roof Restoration, um, the Aquatic Center has been a project of ours for the past five years. We've gone through with general fund dollars to replace much of the flooring. We dealt with mold when I got here, we took care of that on the outside of the building. We recoded the outside of the building, we had some leaks. Um, at this time, there's a couple of items still remaining to get that building almost back to where it, where it should have been the whole time, um, but we are working through that process. And one of the issues we had were leaks in that building, which have been, have been mitigated with this flat roof restoration. Uh, the Frank Bailey and Charlie Griswell Floor Replacements, same thing, that's an LVP, uh, installation throughout. Uh, and that's luxury vinyl plank, and it goes in, and it just makes it a cleaner, easier space for us to manage. The VIP Amphitheater, this is the continuation of the, uh, Lakeview Event Center. That we are in the finalizing the design phase right now. So that should be getting ready to go to, um, the queue so that we can go out to a bid for a construction standpoint. The Behavioral Health Crisis Center, um, we are stabilizing the old Flint River Center, and I may have doubled that one.
Yeah, I was confused.
Yep.
Yeah, I saw that.
That is a bonded project we are currently working on.
Some of the justice centers.
They are justice, yes, ma'am.
Just duplicate it, okay.
Boy, I tell you, this is what happens. Alright, so we will go to the next page. Um, the currently active non-bonded projects. Um, so these are the other projects that came in the, in the twenty program that were, uh, began collections in twenty-one, so that was when we began working on the bonded side, and these are, that we've begun working since then. Uh, the Annex Three Door Replacements, uh, these are the outside doors. Uh, building maintenance has had, over the years, numerous times where the doors have come off of the pivots. Uh, we've had to resecure the building, so this replaced those doors. Uh, there are two single, uh, entrance doors on the first floor, one that comes in the back of probate, and the other one that goes in the back of the, uh, other side of probate that have to also be replaced. Um, those are pending the install. Uh, the Annex Three Window Ceiling, um, we are waiting on the ITB to be posted. We've just gotten that scope of work to Central Services. Um, the Shell Nut Building Renovations, that is a, that houses the, uh, kinship care program through Senior Services. My wife actually worked at that program before, uh, we had our son. And so it's also near and dear to me. Uh, the Entrance Canopy, uh, we're going through a design phase of this now so that it can better meet the needs of the seniors who are taking care of their, uh, family members. Uh, we have done some work in the restrooms, we have some more work to complete. Uh, and there is some additional painting and ceiling restoration throughout the facility so that it cosmetically meets the needs of the, of those individuals who are being served from that perspective. Uh, the Reynolds Nature Preserve renovations, uh, John Mazurala III also is managing that project. Uh, where we're currently focused is the restrooms. And if you have not been to Reynolds lately, um, that is a showpiece. Um, the work that John has done with the contractors through Central Services and others, um, that space is looking fantastic. And I, and I'm very, I'm very proud of the work that they've done with that. Um, the Virginia Stevens House, which is, um, what Director GK was talking about, currently housing, um, the Planning Division, uh, down the street from the, um, Lake Spavy Rec Center. Uh, we are doing some upgrades to the, um, septic system. Uh, we are looking at ways to be able to install an ADA ramp. That is a temporary location that we're using for staff. My understanding is the long term is to, you commute, is to transition that to community space. Um, so as we get to that component, we will, of course, come back to the board and talk to the stakeholders about how that can happen. The County Fueling Center, this is the project I mentioned earlier. It is coming out of the ground, it is behind the jail and the courthouse. Uh, this is going to replace the government circle space, uh, and it is, it is coming up, and Ms. Clayton has done a fantastic job, uh, managing the, the, the A and E firm and the GC on site at that space. Um, we talked earlier about, or you all talked earlier about supporting our public safety folks. Fire Station One, Fire Station Two, uh, are currently under design phase. Uh, I believe we currently have about five different fire stations that we're looking at design and construction on to bring that fleet of facilities up to speed to the twenty-first century. The Public Safety Water Rescue Center, uh, this is going to go over at, on the hill, as our fire, um, the Fire Department calls it, the Training Center. It is, it's going to be a fantastic facility, and it's under design, uh, right now. Uh, the Fleet Maintenance Expansion, uh, stakeholder engagement, we are talking with Director Matarco and others about specifically what that needs to look like as we move forward. We had that initial conversation before it went to the Sploes, uh, the citizens graciously approved it. Uh, and now we are making sure that the, the need is being met based on what was voted for. So the expansion from a service perspective is what we are focused on.
One more important note.
Yes, ma'am.
This board voted to begin utilizing the rental method. And I found out in some counties where they, they had no, their budget was like in a negative, and they started using, um, the rental method. And I know we voted on it for the board to begin using it. I hope you all are going to consider that moving forward as we're looking at the expansion of fleet. Because what I found, in fact, it's Buddy, I'll get you his name, I mean, his full name. But he's a retired trooper, he works with me with MAD. But Buddy's a county manager in a very small county, and he said basically, off of renting the vehicles as opposed to purchasing, it net back money into the county. So we're talking about taxes and, and the weight. Now, of course, we know we ain't renting no fire trucks and all that stuff, I'm not saying that. But we need to look at possibly taking some of that load, and it was a crazy idea. But the counties are making money by the time that the rental agency purchases it, whole cost or whatever the cost is, and then it gets turned back in, and they don't have, he told me, they have not one vehicle on the road that's been on that road more than four years. Not one. And this is not just in the small counties, it's even in some of the larger ones as well.
Yes, ma'am. So, so to your point, that's why we're having that engagement conversation with the stakeholder. Uh, a lot of the equipment needs that we're talking about with Director Matarco, go back to the air system, which has leaks. Talking about the lighting system to ensure that the folks in space can see what they're working on, and some of the other items that are, were high cost, that building maintenance through our actual budget is managing, changing the light bulbs, but to change them and upgrade them to LED is a, is a tremendous cost. So Sploes is able to support that as a large-scale project, as opposed to, um, hitting tax dollars, which we're trying to take care of other things.
Plus, we get a benefit back for changing it. Once we get a benefit back for changing it, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Get our money.
Yes, ma'am. The Rum Creek Facility Upgrades, Rex Park Facility Upgrades, and Morrow Lake City Facility Upgrades. I'm going to talk through them very quickly together. These are old parks. So we had that conversation with Director Hodges. Before we put in for funds, there's the Park Improvement Fund that sits over here, and we put in for facility upgrades. So we've already had engagement with Dr. Anderson and Commissioner Davis related to how we want to move forward. And we're working with Director Hodges and others to make sure that that is, in fact, what we need to do to ensure that, from the long-term perspective, I'm glad that we talked about the future of land use earlier. We want to make sure that we're master planning and not doing knee-jerk reactions today. We are planning out what we're doing in the space so that it can work in the long term for the citizens of Clayton County. Forecasted. We're right here at the end, y'all. These are projects that you will see come before you as budget amendments to fund these projects over the next couple of weeks and months. Police Department Training Center is an approved project within the SPOST. We have to decide, we have found some space that's currently county-owned that we want to bring to you all as a recommendation. We want to speak directly to the commissioner of the district first. The Bullet Trap System. That is going to go in conjunction with the gun range. Where that location will be, will, is to be determined. The Winter Weather Building will go in conjunction with the fueling station. So the fueling station is already being designed and built out. Winter Weather Building will go behind it, and we've already built in some of the infrastructure within that fueling state center to support those spaces at a very small cost. The Sector Four Police Precinct. Sector Four is the police precinct that is currently in a rented space next to the Kroger. We've talked to the Chief of Police and found a good spot, we believe. We're working with the Tax Commissioner to clean up what that looks like because I believe that space should be county-owned at this point. But it's not, so we're working through to make that happen. I can talk to anybody about that specifically offline, but because it's a real estate matter, I don't want to talk about it in the public domain. The Mental Health Infrastructure. We've talked to Dr. Adams about what that looks like from his perspective, and we have some, some needs there. So we'll be bringing that together to the board. We've had some initial conversations about that, but we will, we'll have some more information. The Playground Upgrades. There is some need within the, the existing parks. Director Hodges has requested some funding to upgrade some of the playgrounds. The Pedestrian Bridges. I know we talk, I hear, I'm here every Tuesday night whenever I hear about all of the casualties going across the roads. And so we're working with Transportation Development and the DCOO's office about that project. Additional Trail Development. We've talked about the Rivers Edge Project. There are some additional needs to be able to continue to bring that up throughout the entirety of the county. So we'll be working through that. And the Public Safety Radio System Upgrades. We've talked extensively about our friends in public safety tonight and at other times, and that is managed through our IT Department. And so we've got to be able to continue to support that. And I believe, finally, the Anvil Block Fueling Center. There is more information coming on that directly as we try to figure out exactly how that supports the county in the long term. Thank you. Sorry it took so long. I tried to go as quickly as I could. If you have any questions, like I said, our project managers have given up their evenings with their family to be here this evening to answer any of your questions. And I would be remiss if I did not say thank you for your hard work. Questions?
Carol Clayton. Can you please stand up? Thank you so much for your patience as we work through Flint River Community Center. That's what I wanted to say to you. And to the entire staff, but she knows why. She knows why. I never forget, Mr., sorry, I want to say this real quick. We had issues. You and I went toe-to-toe on it. The county wasted so much money.
Yes, ma'am.
On this project. But I went out there and met Ms. Clayton. And by the time she went over everything, I said, this lady know what she doing. Let me go ahead and let her do her job. So thank you to all of you all. Hopefully, we won't have to do this again with our new projects with you all.
Mr. Hopkins, you and your staff doing a tremendous job. There's a lot going on in Clayton County. There's a lot of new projects that's coming online as well. So we definitely look forward to supporting you and giving you what you need and make sure that we do it right, and we make sure that we give the best facilities that is the expectation of citizens. So thank you for that. Are there any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
I know you're tired of this, but this is very important. I'm glad you made your comment, and that's why it's important that we all keep our eyes on these centers. Over half of these projects, we're having to go back and fix, go back and fix. And when we talk about lawsuits, people don't talk about those lawsuits. Where we got folks coming in and saying, who in the world approve these projects? So I hope, Mr. Chair, you remember who's approving these projects and who's approving these, these CO permits through each step. And if it was done right the first time, y'all wouldn't have to work so hard. That's important. So I hope you, I'm glad you realized that.
Yeah, I also realize this board approves those projects. So we, moving forward, we all will be collectively cognizant of making sure that we're getting this job done right. Thank you, sir.
So to your point, I would be remiss if I did not say, so privately, I call my staff unicorns. They're unicorns because they're incredibly special. And unicorns being mythical creatures, you don't come across them. We've been lucky. This county is incredibly lucky to have those three individuals that come here every day and put the time, effort, and energy into these facilities and these projects. To your point about the Flint River Community Center. Ms. Clayton and I joke about that being her retirement project.
She told me. She told me.
I pray it doesn't take that long, but it will be right. And it will be right not because it's, it's, well, it is my job to make sure it's right, but it's because it's important that we provide the best facilities to the citizens of Clayton County. And that's what this team is doing a great job of.
Yep, and managing every step of the way. Thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. With that being said, that's a good way to go out, so we stand adjourned.